I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We've got a small room today. I'll ask for approval of the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Approval of minutes.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Approval of claims for payment.
I'll make a motion to approve claims for payment.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Set date and time to receive bids on cleaning contract. What this is, we've had a annual, or I believe a five-year cleaning contract with a courthouse to come through at night, they would come through and clean, and it is up for bids. It was supposed to be up in November, and we extended it to the end of June, so it's on time with everything else.
Do we have a time set that we wanted this to be back in by?
We want to make sure we have enough time to get it back so we can instate it for July 1st.
July 1st, okay. How many, Nancy, how many days would we need for advertising and that?
We have, um, four and 20, you know, this, not less than four, more than 20.
Okay, so we're on May 21st right now?
Mm-hmm.
Seven, fourteen, twenty-one, it's June 11th.
Plus, I would think you'd want things drafted before you advertise, so that you have some specs.
So the 18th would be, give us seven days of, am I going to go for June 18th? Does that seem like a... I'll make a motion that we set timing.
To your contract.
To your contract, is what we're talking, yeah.
Okay. Let's set the time and date for June 18th. You want them received before the meeting?
Yes.
Okay, so at 9:45, that'd be work?
Sealed.
Sealed bids to the auditor's office.
Check with Randy for your...
Yeah, that's what I was trying to figure out, the word that...
Send the contract to Randy to have it approved and...
Right. So set time and date, so I've set the time and the date, and also to run this through Randy, the contract through Randy before we send it out.
Sounds good.
Okay.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Just so we're clear, it's June 18th at 9:45, sealed bids have to come in. Randy will set the contract out, it'll be a two-year contract, so to make sure they require all the HIPAA and everything else required for this position.
That's the biggest thing, is when people are cleaning, they have access to a lot of places in our county system that we want to make sure we have that covered.
Background check.
Background checks, yeah.
Yeah.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next we have on the agenda is 2014-15 salaries. This is salaries that would be based off of non-union and non-deputies or elected officials. I know we've talked about it numerous times, it's, we got it on the board, we can't make a decision until we come to the board.
Well, I guess I can start. In the past, we've just done percentages, and percentages, it sometimes are good and sometimes not so good. In percentages, it takes, the higher people hire, and the lower people, it seems like it broadens that gap between them. And I know with the Sheriff's Union this year, I thought we did a nice job with that contract, and I guess I'd be favoring just a one lump sum type of money instead of percentages for this year. I think it helps out with our budget a little better. Also, I want to be able to make sure that the employees can cover the cost of their insurance, because we'll be doing something with that probably at our next week's meeting, and that's basically what we did with the Sheriff's Union, too. So I guess it's coming up with that amount that we want to be at, and I guess personally, I guess that would probably be around that $800. And I don't know if you want that in motion or other opinions before we set it, or...
Yeah, I don't know where, I wouldn't mind doing the math on the $800, but I don't have an objection to doing a lump sum, as long as it's not every year we need to, I guess, rethink it, yeah, rethink it for the following year.
Eight hundred, I believe, is what we did with the Sheriff's Union. And I like the $800 number, it's a flat rate.
And there's nothing wrong with consistency within the union and...
Right, and that's what we're, we'd really like to get a little more consistency going on, and that's one thing about looking at the flat rate versus a percent increase. Somebody making $60,000 at 2% hike versus somebody making $30,000, two and a half, at 2% interest hike is twice the raise, and some of the things we've been looking at. And I would agree with the 800. One thing with the Sheriff's Union, they did have a longevity increase also in their contract, so if it was 800, or if we went to 850, I would be content either way. But I'm open for a motion.
It's a good point, having the longevity.
That's the only reason why I wanted to sit down and maybe do a little math on that, because there was another variable thrown in, and I like the consistency, but it kind of tosses it off a little bit with that longevity clause for the union. But I don't mind where we're heading this year, as long as we rethink it for next year and look at what's fair for the year.
We're in May. Yeah, I think for time constraints, to get this going, I'm comfortable, I'm comfortable, I guess, making a motion at the 850 level, allowing that for that years of service. We don't have that here, so to keep that more even, I think that would even that up a lot more. So I'd make a motion that we approve the salaries with an 850 lump sum.
Moving it up to 850, I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing no more discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Ineligibility, homesteaded military credits to be disallowed for 2014 payable 15 and 16.
These are all disallows, as I have on the sheet in front of me, so I'll make a motion that we accept the military credits to be disallowed as printed on the sheet that I have in front of me.
2014 payable 15, 16.
15, 16, correct, yeah.
And I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next we have is a resolution authorizing expenditure of funds from general fund to urban renewal purposes. Do you want to highlight on that, or...
Sure.
Okay.
The TIP district area that involved Carbotech, or the Jennings area up in Iowa Falls, that's the county's area. A few years ago started to not produce the amount of money in tax revenue to cover the payments that we had incurred for the bond issue that we extended the money to that. So anyway, in order to make the payments, we need to supplement what's raised in taxes by the person or entity that occupies that parcel now or that area, and the only way to do that is to transfer from the general fund, and when you do that, you have to have it done by resolution. And it was already budgeted for, you just have to pass the resolution, and I believe this year we budgeted like, I want to say it was $18,000, and it actually only ended up being like $9,800 that we're transferring. And then this is the last year of payments towards that particular project, so that TIP is essentially done. In the future, it will still be in a TIP district for a short term, because we need to recoup the money that we loaned from the general fund, so in future years, while that money coming in is not going to be used to pay off the debt, it's going to be used to pay off the loan from the general fund to that fund to cover the payments. Anyway, last year you're doing it.
And we're being paid back.
In the future, yep. It'll take about three years, and next year it won't be in effect, but then the three years after that, it will be.
Okay. And then after that...
It could be less, I mean, if the taxes increase to where the money comes in and it's higher than what we predicted, whatever, then it can actually pay it off sooner, but yeah.
Then it goes back to normal after that.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution authorizing the expenditures of funds from the general fund for urban renewal purposes.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Ron.
Aye.
Brian.
Aye.
Lance.
Aye, motion carries. Next we have on the agenda is the Recorder's Monthly Report.
Make a motion to accept the Recorder's Monthly Report.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next, I threw this on here, it's discussion only, it was local option sales tax with economic development. And what local, the lost money, we've been looking for different ways of raising money to help with economic development. And this, if we do this, it's just an idea, there's nothing set in stone, it's the first time we're really talking about it in the open. And if we do this, it would have to go through the ballot of the people to agree on this, and what other counties have done, there's just a list of different things. Jessica's done some research on it for us, and some people use 100% secondary roads, 25% tax relief, 75% lawful purposes, 60% secondary roads, 40% rural basic. Everybody does a little different in what they do currently. What we do is 75% rural service relief and 25% into capital projects. In order to change what we currently do, this does have to go through a vote, we have to know by August 27th, I believe. Yes, August 27th, to be able to put this on a ballot. And again, all I'm doing is throwing it out there for some discussion on ideas of what people think.
Well, I think the one that I put on there, if I can talk, I guess, was Sarah Boarder County has it broken down into four, I don't know if you have that email, but they have 10% allotted specifically to economic development. There's always the, the other county, there's another one in there that said like, community betterment.
Right.
Well, I would think that you could, you could do anything you want, but if you generalized and put community betterment and allowed that to be a percentage, and then when that money starts coming in and is in its separate fund, you have, you don't have to have it on a ballot to dictate how much of that can go to economic development and how much can go to betterment, so that if there is a project you want to back and you want to throw money at it, it's not taking away from them.
Right.
If you just have it earmarked economic development, you're going to send it to them to do their work, but then when something comes along, you're not going to have that extra pot of money, you know, unless you just don't delegate giving them the entire pot. If you just budget and give them less and then build up a big fund balance, you will have money left over then, but I would, if, if I was going to make a recommendation, and obviously I'm new at this, but I think what I would suggest, just looking at fund balances and whatnot, I would cut back a small percentage on the two existing funds that you have to make the portion that you're going to get. I wouldn't just take it all from one or the other. For example, I wouldn't just take it from capital projects. I think you still need money coming into that, that's a huge amount of money that comes in every year to help with that type of stuff. We're pretty good about not being reckless with our capital projects money, so I think it could take a hit in a percentage. The one that scares me is the one that gets the biggest chunk, and that's rural services, only because it is property tax relief. So if you say, instead of giving them 75%, you're going to now give them 50 and then put 25% over into like economic development, that's great, it's going to produce the money you want, but then if worse comes to worse, and you don't have the fund balance in rural services, you don't have that revenue anymore to support it, and the only other option is to increase the tax rate in that particular area. So I would just say I'd try to take a little bit from both and create a third category.
Would it be fair also to say as economic, or capital projects, we could change that to broaden the definition of capital projects?
You can't change the definition of what's...
Or change the words if we're doing that, so it's just not capital projects.
Yeah, you can say county improvements and some, I mean, yeah, you can call it whatever you want, but if you use the word capital projects, it's set in stone what it is.
So that wouldn't hurt to change that word anyhow.
Do whatever you want, yes.
Does, I have a question. Does our local option sales tax, does it sunset, or is it continuous?
I did actually read on that, and I don't believe ours sunsets, because we've pulled out the election register when that was said and done, and we've read the code that dictates how that was done, when it was. And there are some communities and some areas that have sunsets, and I don't believe I can find one on ours.
I don't believe it was ever set up to have a sunset.
And then, once we collect those taxes, then they have to be spent each year. They have to be, they have to be spent down. I know the city of...
Right, you can't stockpile them for a right. You can carry a balance, yeah.
Okay, because that would be my concern, too, if you, if you're not specific enough of what you're going to use the funds for, that if they're, if for some reason we don't, you know, have a plan in place, if you're going to say you're going to use them for economic development or community betterment, that you're able to expend them, you know, and not, I guess, not constrain yourself so much.
Well, yeah, I would think worst-case scenario would be like having a lot of money that we want to throw at something and not having anything to throw it at, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, truthfully.
Right, so...
But you can carry it over for a period of time if...
I believe that you can, in, just in the fact that our capital projects fund remains about a million for the last two years, this year dropped down into the $800,000, but it consistently stays around there. I'm thinking what, what happens for us is most of what we take in is pretty equal to what we're spending. So I would say if you're going to carry over, I think you can carry over a little, but quite honestly, I'm not as versed as maybe you are in that to where I know definitively.
How much does the county usually get into that?
The county portion is roughly a half a million dollars, give or take more, yeah.
Yep.
But that again brings back to my caution where, that's a half a million dollars, where $400,000 of it goes to rural services, and if you take $400,000 and take just a chunk of that away, you have to make that up somehow, because we use that money.
Right.
So...
So you said the $400,000 then is used for property tax relief?
They, they call it that, but what it is is it, it goes into the rural services fund, because it's for the unincorporated areas of the county.
Okay.
If you put it in there, that's considered like fund balance, and then you don't have to tax to raise that money, because it's there. So if it wasn't there, you'd have to tax to raise that money, so that's how they call it, property tax relief.
Okay.
And cities establish their own way of divvying up their money, and none of the cities in Harden County allot any of their money to go towards what they call property tax relief. It's given to other things that, in reality, in the whole grand scheme of things, boil down to less taxes for people, but they don't put it towards like a specific fund that they can point to and say, because this money's coming in, we're no longer taxing for that revenue.
Again, this is discussion only, I think the reason it's on the internet, or on the internet, well, it's going to be on the internet, but is we want input, I guess, from the people from the county on this. What I, what I, there's things I like and don't like about it, but the biggest thing I like about it, we're not creating a new tax, you know, from the people and saying, you know, this is, this is a new tax, you're going to have to pay more. We have to be careful when we push things around, that we don't eventually, like Jessica was talking about, creating a new tax. The rural service fund, 75% of that goes to our roads and our sheriff, and that's for the safety of the people of our county. And, you know, in the past, it seems like that's our, when the county ran short of money, it seems like they ran to roads department, and they took it from them. And in the past three years, we've built that back up to have better roads, safer roads, safer bridges. Also, the library and the fair pull out of that fund. I guess I would like to maybe challenge us as a board to look on the, on the other side of it, at that 25%. I think we could do a better job with our facilities, I mean, if we've got some buildings that we're not, not using it at full capacity, could we lower our costs there somehow by getting, getting rid of a building, or, or something like that, and work harder saving there? And if we can save some there, you know, the rest of that could go to economic development. We haven't raised any taxes, and I think we put the county in a better place. And again, it's just an idea, and I really will, you know, want people to talk to me about this when they're out there, what they feel and see, but that's kind of the bird's eye view I have of it at this moment.
That's why I'm throwing it out there, I mean...
It's good discussion.
I brought it, I brought it to this so the people can see it, and this is something that if it does, if we do try to change something, we'll have to go through a vote, and if people are adamant about not changing it, then there's no point in trying to push it.
Whenever you change something, you're affecting something else, so, you know, I'm going to sit and thoroughly research the deal before I say anything. You know, I, I like the idea of making a change here now, but, but I want to see how that change will affect other departments, so I know where the monies go, and I just want to do more research. We've got till August.
Yep, yes we do.
I, if you're making a list of things to look up, I would want to look up, if you have it placed on the ballot and it fails, does the existing one that passed still remain in effect, or do we operate without one then? I would think that the existing one stays in effect, but I don't definitively know that without looking yet, you know?
That's a good point.
If we're going to change it, though, we've got to start thinking about it now, and we've got a little time, but we...
Oh, yeah, it's going to take education, and I'd like to state on the record, this was not my idea, so those who think that I bring all the ideas and try to railroad them through, this was not my idea. This was, this came from the board, and incidentally, the thing that you said I researched, I didn't research it, ISAC asked a survey, because some other county must be going through the same thing, and it's a survey that people responded to, and I just happened to tap into it and hand it to you, because it was so recent, I mean, it just happened, and it was funny that we just had this conversation, so...
Yeah, I'm the one that asked.
Right. Well, and I don't think, I mean, they're not asking for a ton of money, it's not like we're asking people to subscribe to, we're going to throw a half a million dollars their direction, that's not what it is, it's just getting them more money to do what they need to do.
What we're really in need of with economic development, sooner than later, is a fund that we can budget, that has money sitting in it, so, because sometimes this stuff comes at us, and we've been, we've had to do this in the past, and we can continue to do it, but it would make it a lot easier if this money was already, if we had $100,000 sent in a fund, and we had a grant come up that needed matching funds, and everybody was on board with it, that, you know, this is a great matching fund, or that we need to do this, we can do that in a matter of weeks, you know, or less, about one week.
And we've struggled with that in the past, so, my mind's hitting...
Where we amend the budget, and we have to find the money, take it from another department, so there's some definite, definite merit to getting some type of a budget line set up in the county that has more money than what we're currently doing to help fund these. Now, I wouldn't just be in favor of just, like Jessica was alluding to, that we're just going to say, here you go, here's the money. I mean, I don't think any of us are at that point, but we definitely need to get a line set up that money's available for the city board at that time to set up things that make economic development a lot easier than what's going on right now.
Well, and the discussion a while ago was on carryover and if, and how much we can have, and I want, that's where I want to do a little research.
You, you very well could be right on that.
With the city, I know we have a special meeting where we use the remaining balance. The first $150,000 of our funds go to road improvements and then capital projects, I believe, I don't know the exact wording, but I know that we have a special meeting to, to finalize those fund uses, you know, what's the balances of those, and, and expend those, so...
See, I don't think that we've ever had an issue of non-spending, because $160,000 of it goes to capital projects, and we spend that every year. I mean, we do something of the sort. And then the other bulk of it, the $400,000 of rural services, we have so much that comes out of there by way of transfer, just so it happens.
Just happens.
Roads, yeah, it's just an enormous process for us to spend them, but, but those funds themselves do have carryover, that we do carry over, so it's like, I think it's splitting hairs if we're tracking this dollar bill came in from loss, did we actually spend that dollar bill, or did we spend this dollar bill, and, and it's all in the same fund, so...
Because it'd be nice to be able to build a fund up, you know, that didn't go back to the general fund each year, but I know in county, they really discourage that, so...
And like I said, that may be absolutely right, where you can't, you can't hold it over.
Well, yeah, city's government, they don't have as many funds as we do, I mean, at all, they start pretty much just with one, so, I mean, we're a lot different than that, but we definitely want to look into it.
I think it's a good discussion. Anybody else have any more to add to it, or...
I'm trying to get mine.
I can move to the next one, change of, change of status in Conservation Department.
I'll make a motion to approve change of status, Conservation Department, love seeing old students come through and work for the county, Cody Hildreth, and Conservation Nature Center intern, temporary, seasonal, part-time, being hired.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next is the Engineers' Office. We have Dave Helselbeck.
Yeah, I can do that. Approve the change of status for Engineers' Department.
Hired.
Yeah, I'm glad you always give me the last names of...
That's why I gave it to you.
Thanks. David Hilselbeck, County Engineers' Office, maintenance operator, and full-time, hired.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Dave has been a part-time employee, now he's moved to a full-time status when an opening came up.
Can't we just hire people that have Smith, normal, easy names?
He goes by Digger.
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 It is amazing, the names that come through, it's something. Did I second that?
Yes, you did.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Utility permits, secondary roads.
No utility permits. And Secondary Roads Department, have a bridge on D-25, that's long underway, I think you knew that one started. Have one on 330th, three-quarter mile east of 65, that's going to start on Tuesday, it's a bridge replacement. And then the two on D-20 got let yesterday through the DOT, I looked it up this morning, but couldn't find anywhere, they haven't updated the website about who got those two jobs, so not sure on that yet, but I'm sure that'll be posted today sometime, so, I'll let you know next week, and then maybe we'll find out about when they're going to start, but guessing July time frame for those.
Sounds good.
Really, that's about it.
You also have a request for a Level B to a Level A.
Right, Terry can take over, he's been in contact with Summit Farms.
Yeah, I actually haven't had, talked to Summit Farms, but it'd be located in Section 11 and 12 of Grant Township. It actually would be about three-quarters of a mile north of 305th Street on M Avenue. So Darryl was saying...
South of me.
Actually, it'd be down by Sbarbie.
Okay.
Yeah. Darryl was saying they would pay for the upgrade of the B Road 2 and 8. Darrell was saying they would pay for the upgrade of the B Road 2 and 8. And so far, what I've seen is, last year we've done some ditch cleaning and, and in that area around culverts and stuff, so them should be good. It'd be probably basically just adding rock to the road would be the big thing.
So the trees and the ditches are all cleaned out, ready to go?
It's pretty good, yeah.
We would haul the rock.
Yeah, we'd haul the rock.
They would pay for all the rocks.
And your recommendation is?
I mean, it sounds like the hog site had been approved already, and so I would say yes.
It's not going to cause a conflict of the extra road or anything else for you to maintain and...
Yeah.
It's not out of the way of your route by any means?
I, no. I think I mentioned this before, but they, you know, it's, there's people on 305th that really don't want this hog site there because there's several there already, and there's going to, the way, the easiest way would be to come on 305th and go north to M, on M Avenue. They will be able to come from the north to the south three-quarters of the year, but the rest of the time it's a bad snow issue. So from them to come off of D-55 is going to be a problem in the wintertime.
That's even if they bring it to a Level A.
And I think we were just talking about maybe making the A like three-quarters of a mile.
Oh, not a straight-through road?
Not all the way, because there's about two and a half miles in there.
Okay.
So if that's such a thing, that the sign could be relocated, you know, making just a portion of that road in A until further.
Which we have a lot of roads like that already.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah.
Okay. Got any paperwork on that by chance?
No.
Whether it be a resolution, we'll have to pass, but just not bring it to your attention now.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd like to drive out and actually...
Right.
See what's going on there and check the ditches and stuff. Like I said, that was my concern, too, that, you know, are the ditches not cleaned out or, I mean, do we need to do those, too? Or is it just put gravel and we're good and, you know, that type of stuff?
Darrell was mentioning about maybe going further with the cost, you know, because I know we cleaned in the areas where the culverts are at, but there's definitely more ditch needs to be cleaned there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Once the trucks start going over it, then everybody's...
Tearing the road up.
Yeah. And then getting the phone calls that it's, and then we're back there cleaning the ditches when it started as a B road to begin with, so...
That's right.
Just make sure we look at it in the right way, so I'd like to, yeah, drive out there, but I don't have an objection against it right now, but I wouldn't vote for it yet until we get eyes on it.
Sounds like they would be willing to pay the cost, so...
Yeah, I can see their point.
Yeah. Whatever it takes to upgrade the road.
Mm-hmm. So would the road grader have to go down just three-quarters of a mile and turn around and come back, or would you just go on through?
In most cases, you have to take that road, because I ran that route for years.
Okay.
You have to take M Avenue to go north to catch what I call the horseshoe area.
Okay.
And in most cases, that works in the winter. It's just when it gets really bad where there's a place there that is probably 10 to 12-foot tall, banks on both sides, and it goes level full. So when it gets bad.
So they'll pay to bring the road up and...
Or cut the roads down.
Two and a half miles.
Okay. Okay, well, thank you. We can go to other business. Do you have anything else, or, you guys? Anybody?
I would like to introduce you to Jefferson Fassbender. He is the one that's been hired by ACLE to help with economic development, so want to make sure you have a chance to visit with him.
Do you have your UNI colors on, or is that...
It's actually just happened to be the shirt today.
Did they give you business cards?
Actually, they did.
Did you get them?